Good evening. I'd like to open the February 23rd, 2016 meeting of the East Long Metal Planning Board under Master General Law, Chapter 30. I have to announce that we are recording this for the minutes through our director. LCAT is also recording and I have to ask if anyone else is. Seeing none, we'll jump right in. At 6:00 PM, we have Steve Graham to discuss the depot in town.
Good evening.
Welcome.
Thank you.
You begin train service soon?
We always like to go.
Better get some tracks in first.
Here's a picture of the way it looked a number of years ago. Bruce Moore was kind enough to give me this picture and I thought I'd just bring it with me, not that you don't know what it looks like, but thank you for giving me the opportunity tonight. I own the train depot. I've owned it for probably five years now, believe it or not. I bought it from the owner of the land, Jay LaFaye, and the reason I purchased it was to make sure it didn't disappear. So I leased the land from Jay and I've thought about doing a number of things on it and ventured it around. Actually had a conversation with George a few years ago and spoke with Robin. She suggested I come in and talk to the planning board. And what I would like to do with it at this point is turn it into an ice cream shop in its present location and keep it intact and as original as possible, given whatever code requirements might be necessary to accomplish this. And so I'm happy to try and answer any questions I can for you, but the basic idea is to, one, preserve it in the original condition, both inside and out, and two, to add something to the town by turning it into an ice cream shop. Some quick background on myself. My wife and I have lived in town since, well, for about 25 years. We've raised our family. Our children went to the high school and kid's schools. We've been active in the town over the years. I was the wrestling coach at the high school for a number of years. Stepped down last year. Been involved with the East Long Metal Educational Endowment Fund. Our business is on Industrial Drive in East Long Metal, 35 Industrial Drive called Tonner Plastics. And very interested in seeing the iconic building preserved and also interested in things that might enhance the quality of life and attractiveness of East Long Metal. And I think with the trail, the walking trail there, an ice cream shop might be a really nice addition.
So are you gonna do a, like a long-term ground lease with the landowner and then keep it right there where it is now?
My hope is that it stays exactly in the same place forever. I am willing to invest my personal funds to take a risk that it remains there. I cannot say that I would be able to do that, to execute a long-term ground lease.
That's kind of an interesting scenario.
Well, that's a business.
Yeah, I understand.
From zoning, if I remember it, that is zone business, right in the front section.
Certainly is.
And an ice cream shop would be what, a type of restaurant? Retail?
Retail.
Retail. Yeah, I mean, it's allowed in that zone.
Yeah.
Well, I for one think it would be a great idea.
It's about 200 feet.
To see that building used as a, that's a great idea. Because I know so many different ideas have been batted around as to what to do with it, where to put it, but for short term simplicity, even before the giant carnival, I think that would be a huge asset. I would love to see that. That's my opinion.
So you're leasing land under it now. How much land are you actually leasing, or is it sort of nebulous?
If you know the chain link fence.
Yeah.
It's approximately from the street to the chain link fence in depth and from one end of the building, from the rail trail to Maple Court. The parcel that I'm leasing, the portion that I'm leasing.
Portion that you're leasing. So you've got frontage.
Yes, this is a lot of frontage.
Important, yeah.
How about parking?
Well, there's a fair amount of parking in that stretch of land.
How long is your current lease for right now?
My current lease is month to month.
Well, again, I think, I think that's, that's something you would have to deal with. I think with the board, we have to look at whether or not the location's adequate for it, you know, whether, you would have to come back with a site plan presented to us, which showed us parking and stuff like that. And being in a business district, I would...
I think the idea's a great one. Take an iconic eclectic.
Yeah, it is. Absolutely it is, in my opinion, too. But going back to the parking issue, are you leasing enough land to have the required parking that you're gonna need to do this?
He would have to.
Well, he would have to, but it sounds like what you're leasing isn't gonna be, is gonna have enough parking.
Yeah, he's got a lot. He's got from the chain link fence to the street.
How far back is the chain link fence?
Approximately 200 feet.
Oh, is that far back?
Yeah.
Oh.
And then it's from the rail trail to Maple Court.
Okay, then you should have enough parking.
There's tons of parking.
Well, the other point is, too, if another business decides to go in there, we could readdress it then, but right now, this is the only thing that's being presented to us.
Right. And it's not being presented, he's asking.
Right, yeah.
If that's something that's feasible.
Yeah.
And in a business district, the retail use of it's allowed. I think it's a great idea. One of my questions would be through George, I would think, historical. Is that...
It has not been, as far as I know, again, we'd have to ask historical commission, but it hasn't been declared or registered or anything else.
Okay.
Okay, so it's, it's not officially historic in the sense that it's on a list that would require you to go through all kinds of hoops to make modifications.
Right.
Okay?
Right. I checked that out.
Okay.
And there's, we don't have anything in town that's on the historical list, yeah? I mean, it's been an issue for town for other buildings.
Yeah.
That they want, but it, we just don't have it.
Yeah. So I mean, that's, that's a positive.
It's a good thing, right.
From the point of view of working with it.
Right.
It's got frontage, it's an allowed use, you know, it's a great use.
Great spot.
And I understand that you understand the risk that if someone comes in and buys that property to put up something else, like a mall, strip mall or whatever, that somehow or other negotiation will have to happen if that's gonna stay there, if that's gonna be included in their plans.
Right.
Okay, but for the time being, that's the principal structure on the property. It's the only structure.
It's the only structure on the property.
So it's the principal structure, which is fine. So I don't see anything in zoning that would preclude that.
There's nothing in zoning that precludes it. Nothing, nothing.
And I think the board would agree. I think it's a great use of the building.
It's allowed use, it's a great use.
I don't know as far as the building inspector and updating it and all, but that's completely on you.
Yes.
Well, we would obviously take the proper steps required to do any work there of any nature. And I have preserved documents that were, I found in the building from many, many years ago and I've preserved the scale that was in there. And so assuming that the building code allows the scale to be put back in, we will really try to keep it as original as possible.
Let me just think about this for a minute. How many square feet is the building?
It's approximately 20 by 40.
Okay, so 20 by 40. So it's 800 square feet. And would this be, what, five cars per thousand?
Six.
Or would this be the number of seats? Six cars per thousand? So he's got less than a thousand, he's only, you only need six cars, right?
Six parking spaces, yeah.
Oh, well, that's not very much, but I think you're gonna want a lot more than that because you're gonna have more than six customers on a hot summer day.
Hopefully.
Yeah.
Well, hopefully, a lot of them will be walking off the rail trail.
It's a bribery to get your kids to go to the rail trail and get your ice cream afterwards.
Yeah. That's right.
There's no downside. I think it sounds great.
No, it's awesome. I just wanna make sure you can make it work.
Yeah. I know you've already put in like a bunch of money into it to stabilize it because you, I saw the work that was done.
We did the, the undercarriage of the building was, was very deteriorated and it was collapsing. The floor was collapsing inside. And we replaced all the, all the timbers there. I actually cut the, cut the wood myself. I have a sawmill. And so we put in two by twelves by 20 feet. Well, actually, I think, you know, probably about 20 feet and a laminated beam. So the structure was stabilized and there was no further deterioration.
That's good.
But I think it'd be neat for the town. I think it'd be a lot of fun.
It would be, definitely.
So.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Lot more steps.
Is there, is there anything else I can answer, or is there any other suggestions that we'd like?
I think we'd probably require a site plan at minimum.
Right.
Right. So, you know, until we see that, of course, we can't really vote or anything. But the concept sounds great to me.
And you'd need an interior plan showing for the Department of Health because you'd need your licenses from them, too, so.
An interior plan of the existing building?
Interior, what you're intending to do.
What our proposal is.
With all your, you know, ice cream areas, the station, the sanitary, the water sewer.
Yeah, I know there's regulations. The scoops can have to be this far away from this and, but that's completely Health Department.
I can hook you up with Amy.
Now, Robin, if they're providing interior seating for customers, does that turn it to a special permit?
If they're making the ice cream there, not if they're just serving it.
Serving packaged ice cream.
Right.
Well, the internal seating could also affect their parking, correct?
Uh, yes.
No, it's worth changing.
Yeah, it's actually if they're serving it, isn't it to be consumed on the site?
You have to be making it, preparing it and consuming it on site to meet the restaurant definition.
Okay. You work with Robin on that because it's technical, but if you're a restaurant, you'd need a special permit. If you're not, you don't.
But again.
It's just another.
Yeah, with the special permit, I mean, it's an allowed use and allowed zone. I mean, I can't say that it would go through with the flying colors because we haven't seen anything, but typically if it's an allowed use, allowed zone, the right amount of parking spaces, there's usually no problems. I think it sounds wonderful.
Great. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Okay.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Want to get a plate of ice cream?
Maple walnut.
Butter crunch.
Chocolate.
Very vanilla.
I'm on a diet, so no ice cream.
Yeah, well, I'm on a diet, too, so.
Good night, Steve.
You wanna start at the top of the list? Request waiver, site plan review for Brush 44 Harkness Ave.
Request waiver, site plan review. Property owner is RGO D., Robin, can I have a little assistance here? Okay, thank you. 29 Stonegate Circle, Wolverham. Owners' phone numbers are listed here. Name of proposed business is Brush. Owner of business will be Tammy Shamberlane and Jacqueline Lopez. Business owner's address is 34 Butternut Street, Springfield and 119 Laurel Road, West Springfield. Property address is 44 Harkness Ave, East Long Metal Business District, and it is allowed use. Proposed hours of operation are Tuesday through Thursday, 10 to 8, Friday, 10 to 6, Saturday, 9 to 3. Number of employees, including owner, is seven. Date of last parking plan is not applicable. Summary of business operation is no, is a hair salon, no massage. Number of commercial vehicles is zero. The amount of products stored on site is not applicable. The application's been signed and dated February 9th, 2016.
This is a hair salon going in where visual changes was.
They moved out?
Yes.
They moved over to Shaker Road.
Oh, that's right.
This is deep behind Big Y.
Behind Big Y, yep. It's down in the back section. So it's an allowed use and allowed area.
Make a motion to approve.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Sorry.
We'll go on. Request for waiver, site plan review, Verizon Wireless, 30 Benton Drive.
Property owner is American Tower, 116 Huntington Drive, Boston, Mass. Phone numbers are listed here. Name of proposed business is blank. Owner of business is Selco Partnership DBA Verizon Wireless. Business owner's address is 99 East River Drive, East Hartford. Property address is 30 Benton Drive. Property district is A. Allowed use is yes. No hours of operation not applicable. Number of employees not applicable. Date of last parking plan the same. Summary of business, Verizon Wireless is removing six antenna panels and replacing them with six upgraded antenna panels and adding three remote radio heads on an existing telecommunications tower. The application has been signed and dated February 12th, 2016.
Just a replacement of antennas.
Yeah.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have a request for, actually, request for signage, Coyotes Den, 182 Benton Drive. I should probably recuse myself, I guess. Sorry about that.
Request for sign. Business name is Coyotes Den, Sell Storage. Business owner's name and address is Big Wind Corporation, 182 Benton Drive. Square foot area of proposed sign is 99 feet, 59 inches. It's single-faced. It is not freestanding. It's attached to the building. No projection. If attached to buildings, does the sign project over pedestrian or vehicular away? No. Setback from property line, 82 feet, 4 inches. Distance to nearest side yard, 40 feet. Distance to top of sign above vertical wall is 16 inches. Proposed sign is permanent. Total number of existing signs is one. Total square foot of existing signs is 99 feet, 59 inches, square feet, nine inches, 99 square feet, 59 inches. Total number of proposed and existing signs is one.
99 feet, 59 inches.
Yeah.
Well, 59 inches is another five feet. Oh, .59, 99.59 square feet.
That's what it is, yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
99 and a half square feet.
Right, just under 100.
Do we have a picture of it?
Yeah, it's not quite described like that.
I read it in email form as well. It wasn't described like that.
15 inches tall, 30 inches wide.
Are they including the canopy or the sign? Everything including?
It's the entire, the canopy is the sign.
It's being measured in three different ways. It needs to be measured totally.
Yeah, up and all the way across, correct?
Exactly.
Right.
Which, which isn't the way it's measured.
Jamie, you wanna, I don't know if you can see that or not?
So, just for the record or approving, he's asking for approval on the sign. It's already up.
Yeah.
Basically.
Might as well. Just take that for the record.
Well.
And what's, and what's the, the limit? 100 feet?
Well, I'm gonna read in.
Square feet.
He's in industrial garden park.
So clearly over.
It says.
100 square feet.
Section 5.85 subsection D. Says no, no sign shall have a square footage in excess of 5% of the square footage of the front elevation of the primary building, but in no case shall the square footage of the sign be more than 100 square feet. So.
So it could be up to 5%.
Exactly. I asked Robin to pull the original plans for the building. Building's 30 feet long. It's nine feet, seven and a half inches tall. So it would give the front elevation of 289 square feet. If this is almost 100, you're looking close to 33%.
33%, yeah.
I mean, this is way over the 5% that's allowed.
Also, if you measure it as a rectangle, it's 114 square feet, not including the wings.
And so it doesn't meet.
Either.
More than one.
Doesn't meet either one.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve because that's the proper way to make a motion.
I will second that motion.
Any further discussion on it? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Three to one against.
I think that was a teachable moment.
Yeah, it was a teachable moment.
But that's all right.
You understand, no, maybe you need to make a clear, I mean, this is a very important vote.
Oh, you still have to ask to approve the motion? You don't ask to not approve the motion?
They do it in, yes. I think it needs to be done over.
The proper way to do it is always to.
This is a very, very important.
To, to make the motion to approve the request and then if you vote against it, then it's a denial.
Okay.
Okay.
Can I recant my vote?
I think you need to.
May I do that? Is that?
I think it's a moot point. It's been, then.
Yeah, it's okay. We've already, we've already, yeah.
Go back and forth on it.
Yeah.
No, we don't need to.
It's already.
Yeah, it's already said no to, so it's fine.
It's already been denied, so.
What is it?
It was a denial.
Three to one.
With one recusal.
George, you made the motion. Michael, you second today.
Yeah.
Correct.
Yes.
It's one of those little quirks.
Yeah, make a motion to deny.
It makes you feel any better. I did it, too.
Okay. I think you're likely to be lying to me, but that's okay.
No.
I think we've all done it once.
Yeah, we have.
Okay, we have a request for waiver of site plan review, Elmcrest Country Club, 105 Sommersville Road.
Request for waiver, site plan review. Property owner is Meadow Holdings LLC. Owner's address is 105 Sommersville Road, East Long Metal. Phone numbers are listed here. Name of proposed business is Elmcrest Country Club. Owner of business is Elmcrest National LLC. Business owner's address is 105 Sommersville Road, East Long Metal. Property address is the same. Property district is golf slash residential and it is an allowed use. Proposed hours of operation are Monday through Saturday, 8 to 2, Sunday noon to 2. By the way, the 2 is in AM to 2 AM. Number of employees, including owner, is zero, oh, zero employees, three LLC members. Date of last parking plan is non-applicable. Summary of business operation is golf course, country club, clubhouse, an operation that includes an 18-hole golf course, retail shop, pool, restaurants and banquet facilities. The application has been signed and dated February 22nd, 2016.
So, tight, there was no employees, just three owners?
I don't, I don't know why it says zero employees, but it says zero employees, but three LLC members.
I believe right at the moment, they're not up and running.
Yeah, I don't think they're operational at all.
When they're operational, they obviously will have employees.
Sure they will, right.
Yeah.
Or maybe it's a self-serve golf course.
So they want to start a new business.
Put your money in a can.
Make sense out of the number of employees. At least a good guesstimate.
But in order to get a business certificate.
They're looking for a business certificate.
Okay. It doesn't really impact the use because they've got tons of parking.
Tons of parking.
You know.
And it's an LLC DBA in order to get their, their banking information and their checking accounts and everything.
Such stepping stone.
They need the business certificate and this is part of it. They were not closed for two years, so they don't fall under a special permit. And they're actually, they have said, even though they said a restaurant, they're really not a restaurant. You cannot go in and.
Banquet facility.
Order, right.
Not necessarily.
Even, even so, under 3.025 Golf Recreation, a restaurant on the premises of a golf course isn't allowed use.
Yes, it is.
By law. So it's one of those where.
A restaurant on the property, right. There's no restaurant.
My, my only question would be the 2 AM closing time.
That's their liquor license.
Well, I would assume they don't have a liquor license at the moment because they don't have.
I don't know. There's a, there's a.
Don't know anybody else that has a 2 AM, do we?
Yeah.
Don't, yeah, that, that.
I mean, all other.
It was a pledge. The liquor license was a pledge.
Well, I don't know how you pledge one. I don't even know if that's legal.
A lot of restaurants, no, they do, a lot of them do.
But that's besides, I think most of the restaurants in town, don't we allow them to be open till 1 AM?
Restaurant under special permit.
Under special permit.
Restaurant under special permit. This is not a restaurant.
What would be the thought of the board on that?
Well, first of all, you're not playing golf at 2 o'clock in the morning. So the late time, in my mind, is for banquets.
Right.
Okay, you know, if they go only a New Year's party or a wedding going late, you know, that's what that's about. It's not like it's gonna be 2 AM every night.
Okay.
Because, and, and if they do decide that they want to be, allow people to buy, people who play the course to buy a beer and a burger afterwards, and that would constitute a restaurant, it's still covered under the allowed use in golf recreational because it's on the premises.
Right.
Okay, so it doesn't need a special permit. So it's, you know, I first looked at this and I said, huh, you know, how do we do this under a waiver? But then, you know, Ralph and we looked at the law and that's the way it reads. So I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a second on the motion?
Before I second, I think, I'm not real crazy about the 2 AM closing.
Yeah, I'm still questioning that.
I don't, I can't see opening, letting one establishment stay open later than all the others.
And is that gonna open a can of worms and everybody's gonna be in here 1 or 2 o'clock, too?
It's really not, it's not under the planning board purview, their hours of operation.
Because it's not a special permit.
Not, not for a waiver.
All right, well, stop thinking sudden, then I will not.
Well, then, I mean, we have the purview.
Any more than if a convenience store wants to stay open, that we have nothing in our bylaws that says they can't be open 24 hours a day. And the planning board could limit that if you're under special permit, but this is strictly a waiver.
But they're not under special permit.
This is a waiver. So if you want to make them come under a special permit, then that's a different issue. But under a waiver, it's not.
No, we can't make them come under special permit because it's allowed by law.
And I will second George's motion.
Okay. Any further discussion on it? Tight?
No. Just kind of an odd situation.
Yeah, you might certainly don't want to overstep our bounds.
Exactly, yeah. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Administrative issues. It was brought to the planning board's attention. I believe if I'm correct, we had talked about Mario's, they want Keno and that they would have to come back for a change in their special permit because the entertainment, that wasn't included in it. After saying that, the board of selectmen notified us that Bentley's does have Keno, but it's not included in their special permit.
Correct.
So I asked Robin to draft a letter to Bentley's, just saying that obviously this was an oversight when we went through it and to ask them to come in for a discussion.
Good.
Would the board be in agreement with it?
Yeah, we'd want to make someone else do it.
Absolutely.
That, that's the whole issue.
Okay. So with that, I will sign the letter. Send that one out. Didn't want to do it without the board's permission and blessing. That's that. This here is a letter to Ms. Bauer, basically saying all the board members and that we're allowed to endorse an A and R and subdivision plans for the town.
If you remember before, previously, anytime a new board member came on, we had to provide your signatures, which we've done in the past, to the registry of deeds.
To the registry.
So that when we, when they receive an A and R with a signature on it, they can verify it. That's all that is. And you'll concede goes to the register of deeds.
So make this a good signature.
And Deborah is.